If everybody settled in at 6 o'clock, so I'd like to go ahead and call the meeting's order, please. The first item is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would all rise for the pledge.
My pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America and to your republic, which stands no nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
I'll make that motion.
And second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. And that takes us to our first public hearing. The Woodville Tower site location. Michelle, Ms. Summers, if you would be so kind?
Thank you. CWS submitted a personal wireless service facility application on July 31st, 2019. The entirety of the application submitted was and is provided on the agenda materials section of board docs. The applicant, CWS, modified their application prior to determination by the planning commission and letter to that effect is on board docs. Before the board tonight, this application is located on Eldon Farms along 522, tax map number 491. CWS initially proposed 199-foot lattice tower, but they have proposed to a 139-foot monopole tower with green slats and a compound screening and to remove the waiver requested of the tower with removal bond. They are requesting waivers for microwave dishes to be used, landscaping requirements, the permit of signability, and the accessory being a type two subdivision road. The planning commission held on September 18th of 2019 their public hearing, and again, that was continued to the November 20th meeting. The commission decided to order another public hearing since the applicant had properly changes. The second public hearing was held on December 18th. At that meeting, the commission recommended denial of the application by a motion that read, "Based on the location, height, and design of the monopole, it does not minimize visibility so as to preserve the viewshed and protect the natural, scenic, and historic resources of the site and is therefore inconsistent with the comprehensive plan of 1 and 4, the Rappahannock County Code 170-F52J, and it will create adverse impact on tourism and property values on the creation of an attractive and harmonious community in contradiction to the Rappahannock County Code Section 170-108, 1, 4, B4, and 170-52." This motion passed by vote of four to one. This public hearing has been properly noticed to be considered tonight, voted with an add in newspaper and mailing to the property owner within one mile of the tower. I also believe at this time the applicant would just provide the board with a presentation.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Summers.
Thank you.
Right. Since the applicant is present, if you have anything to add, now would be a good time.
I'm Chairman, members of the board, I'm Rich Davies. I'm from Culpeper, Davies, Carroll, Will, Owen, and Edwards, Gilbert City. I've been representing Community Wireless Services for a number of years as we have worked trying to provide cell phone service in this part of the general. One of the things that has become a hallmark of Community Wireless is they look, listen when they go to planning commission meetings, and they reach out and talk to people in the community. Hope McPerry is here who will be making the presentation on the end of Community Wireless has actually been doing it. I have been to most of the meetings. I was unable to attend the planning commission meeting and recommended denial of the new tower, but I can tell you they really did work on it. They lowered the height from the original request. They have tried to make it so that it would be less obtrusive to the landscape, which is obviously a sensitive issue. They have worked and want you to know, they've spent time working carriers and they presently have expanded service here to her Austin at the tower which is just in the middle. They are looking at getting additional carriers on the tower. Sperryville can actually have contracts on that. I can tell you that that is part of why they looked so carefully at the 522 corridor, the 522 corridor, lack of diffident service. Both the volunteer fire departments and volunteer rescue squad have indicated that they are suppoiled of this, and the reason is because of emergency services. If you have an accident on 522 and you're over the range, there's no way to call unless you have a hard line. And that is a challenge, that's something that certainly the health and safety of the people in Rappahannock County need to have that access to the service. One of the things that I also think is important is that the service in the fact that the corridor becomes critical when you have volume of tourist traffic. That becomes a real challenge, and you want to have that service to do a better benefit. Not only will local people benefit from having cell phone service, but if you look at what is happening in today's society, many people are moving away from permanent hardline service to cell phone service, and that to a large extent is being driven by access and affordability. Tonight, Hope McPerry is here on behalf of Community Wireless Services. She is prepared to make the presentation. There are representatives here from San Antonio who have the ability to respond to any questions that you have, and we appreciate the opportunity to hear your hearings tonight. We thank you. I'll turn it over.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Summers.
Good morning. And Hope McPerry from Community Wireless. Do you have the certification screen?
No. Maybe you might want to pivot your chair.
Well, it's up to you. I just, there are a few things I'd like to look at, I'm not sure. And I know many of you have been in some planning mission meetings, so you probably listened a lot of the floor. Just by way of refreshing you on our background, CWS has developed a telecommunication infrastructure in Virginia.
Move this closer to me.
Yeah. We built 56 structures, including 14 neighboring Culpeper, Madison, and Faulkshire counties, and of course we built one last year in Sperryville. We space our facility, we have leases with all major wireless carriers, ATT, Verizon, T-Mobile, Sprint, and Chantel. Gary, sorry. We're going to have to get our communication together. And then we also need space for number six wireless broadband provider and emergency services organizations. This map shows all the, three dots are all the towers that CWS has built over the past few years, they're all in northern and central Virginia, that's where we focus. I'm here tonight to discuss our plan to develop a mobile wireless and broadband network along Route 522 corridor in the southern part of Rappahannock County. The two new structures we're proposing to build, one near Straddle and one we're talking about right now near Woodville, will allow service providers to implement seamless coverage between the existing telecom facilities in Sperryville and Boston. And as you know, wireless connectivity will benefit development, healthcare, education, and most importantly, public safety. On this map, the red dots are locations of the two new sites that we're proposing, the green dots are the existing Sperryville and Boston. As we mentioned, Chantel is here tonight, they're a current affiliate in this market and may have expressed intention to install, provide service from all four structures should they be built. This next map is a roadmap. This shows all of the existing telecom structures in the county along the two major transportation corridors, 522 and 211. All the green dots are existing, of course the red dots are the regions proposed. And Chantel and Sprint are installed on all of those green dots currently, the exception is Sperryville haven't gotten on there yet. So you can see that with the implementation of the two new sites, Sprint will have pretty much border-to-border complete coverage and a complete network within the county, which is a pretty significant commitment. So we originally applied, as you know, to build 199-foot structure on this 531-acre Eldon Farms parcel. The site is located just south of the intersection there and 522. The tower would be in a 50 by 100-foot dense compound set back approximately 1100 feet from 522. It's adjacent to some existing power lines and it will not be lit, there's no ethereal requirement for the tower to be lit. Base of the tower is screened from the road and also from a neighbor's parcel by existing trees and vegetation, even though the site isn't covered with it. And the access will be from an existing entrance and driveway off of 522 to extend that route of farm road to the site. Facility would accommodate up to four wireless service providers with Chantel as the leading carrier. Since the time of our application last July, based on extensive feedback we've had from the planning commission and citizens and staff, we made a number of changes to our application or offered to make some changes to our application late last year. Most significantly, we offered to lower the height from 199 to 139 feet, that's 60-foot or 30% reduction. And we believe that that height reduction significantly mitigates the visual impact of the structure while still maintaining sufficient coverage along Route 522, which we talked about this, the planning commission, the coverage of the transportation quarters, that's the carrier's main objective when they first get into the county. Once the main roads are covered sufficiently, then they look at ways to get deeper into the county. The next slide is a letter from Chantel from last fall. We wanted to make sure that they, you know, they were part of this decision to lower the height and that it would work for them. They affirmed that in this letter as well as affirming their interest in all four of the structures. The next slide, these are propagation maps, coverage maps prepared by Chantel, so it only reflects Chantel's configuration. The map on the left shows what they would predict the coverage to be if they were only installed on the existing Sperryville and Boston sites. You can see a large white area there which would essentially represent no coverage or spotty coverage. The map on the left assumes that they would be installed on all four sites, and you can see all the gaps are filled in and there's good strong coverage, all types of coverage, in-building, vehicular, and outdoor along 522. This next propagation map shows what the coverage would be, since we have two separate public hearings here, what the coverage would be if we built Woodville without Straddle. You know, and again, you can see that there would be still remaining with no Straddle on air, a pretty significant gap more than south of proposed Straddle site, so it would not fully solve the problem. Again, we believe that at a reduced height, most of the views of Woodville Tower would be really nowhere impactful than that of all the utility poles that run along 522 and the power lines across the field. These are some of the standards that we had in our original application. We did an extrapolation to show kind of the impact of lowering the height, we'll just kind of scroll through these, Gary. This was one of the most prominent views that we found traveling more on 522. They got a pretty good shot at the tower at 199, still see it, but much less than only the, you know, maybe top third of the tower at 139. This next view is from the entrance to Clover Hill House. The tower is really far away in the distance, and even at 199, you don't see a whole lot, but at 139, it's pretty negligible. And there are, of course, lots of spots along 522 where you don't see the tower when you're driving north and south, it just really depends on which vegetation and tree line there is where you're driving. This is right at the entrance where we would enter the farm to get to the site, couldn't see the loom when it was swung, and the next one is, you know, a quarter mile away again, very close to the tower, which you won't see it from that spot. Just as a refresher, here's some of the infrastructure I was referring to on 522, near Eldon, power lines crossing the field, power lines crossing the road. This is a photo, this next slide, of where the tower site itself. The tower will actually be kind of up on that knoll, just a little bit off to the left of this photo, which you can see that there are power lines running right next to where we have the tower site planned. So in addition to lowering the height, we have offered to build a monopole structure instead of a lattice, which seems to be preference of a lot of folks, and we've also offered to paint it if that's requested and preferred. The next slide are two examples of CWS towers that we've built, one in Islaun County, one in Culpeper. The one on the left is painted a solid brown screen, and the one on the right is what we call graduated paint, where it's green on the bottom and then transitions to what we call a sky blue. We're also suggesting that, this wasn't in our original application, but to help further screen the equipment on the ground inside the fence, that we use these green slats in the fence which helped screen, this is again a CWS site where we use that type of fencing. And there are equipment cabinets in there and you can't really see them on the exit screen, which just helps it blend in better with the environment. I'm not going to get in, go ahead Gary, sorry. So in planning commission meetings, there was a lot of discussion about, you know, how we arrived at this particular location. You know, we know it's not perfect, why are we there? I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this, and if you have questions and want to go through it, we can. These are, you know, this is all the different things that have to be taken into consideration when you find a spot. You know, most importantly, one of the works of the carriers from a propagation standpoint, then you have to find a willing groundowner who will have, you know, their own issues and concerns, cost to construct, so on and so forth. We looked at six different locations on Eldon Farms throughout our process, we prepared three different sets of engineering drawings, really to try to find the best option, and that's where we're at. We have requested four waivers from zoning requirements in our application, the Rappahannock ordinance requires the use of microwave dishes. We will need to be able to, the carriers will need the ability to use microwave in the short run until fiber is available, which is their preferred way of getting telco service, which they need to run their equipment. The good news is that Rappahannock Electric is in the process of deploying fiber open down 522, and I had spoken to them recently, when I spoke to them late last year, they were projecting that for 2020. Carriers strongly prefer fiber, they don't like to use microwave at all, so as soon as it's available, they'll be transitioning away from microwave dish. Land saving requirements, there are land saving requirements in ordinance, but there is a provision that allows that to be waived when there is natural screening. Again, even though this is a wooded site, we think there's plenty of nearby vegetation and tree line, that we were not able to really see the base of the tower or the ore, or the component compound at all from the road. So we don't have that, you know, planted landscaping requirement. And then we need to be able to assign our use permit if down the road or sell the asset, and we want to use the existing farm road and extend that rather than building a new road, which is a less obtrusive solution. This is the tower at Ben New that you're all familiar with, and the only reason I put it up there, it's hard to see, but if you look on the upper right-hand corner next to that tall antenna, you see a little dot, and that's a microwave dish that's been on that site for a long time and doesn't seem to be bothering anybody. You know, we're not talking about these large giant drum dishes that you see sometimes on big public service towers, these are typically maybe 3D diner and a high in the air, they're not very usually obtrusive, so just a question. Just kind of recapping, you know, why are we asking you to support this telecom structure in Woodville? As I mentioned, this site along the other three will bring wireless service to those who live or work traveling the county along the county's primary transportation routes. I believe affordable and reliable access to wireless these days is a necessity, not a luxury. Probably most importantly, you know, we improve public safety. Reliable wireless will ensure that people can communicate with first responders in the event of emergency, and it will also help first responders communicate with each other when their radio systems are inadequate, as they are in certain areas of the county. We've been told by numerous folks that live out here that the landlines are unreliable, and I think that's just going to continue because there's so fewer people using landlines these days. I think 70% of people are all wireless now. This is a letter, you know, putting an exclamation point on the public safety aspect. This is a letter from Gerald Hugo, representing fire and rescue community, supporting our applications from a public safety perspective. And the next letter was from the school board, also supporting wireless, supporting new infrastructure primarily, I think, for school bus safety. And, you know, important to the county, I think, everyone, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about how to get broadband out into the communities and into the county, and some of your neighboring counties have had to do that with taxpayer dollars and with public funds, you know, we're offering private investment here. The next item, I think, is really important too. We have three carriers right now who are actively interested in expanding service in Rappahannock. We have Chantel, we have T-Mobile, has leases in place with us at Boston and Sperryville, and we have Verizon who just submitted a formal application with us and told us they want to be on the air this spring. That means that the carriers have us in their build plans, they've allocated capital for this market. If structures don't get built relatively soon, that capital's going to go elsewhere. So my question is, not now, when? We did evaluate multiple sites, the benefit of, one of the benefits of Eldon Farms, they control 7,000 acres, so there aren't a lot of neighbors who are impacted, or are a few. And we believe that visual impact has been significantly mitigated through the proffers. So I respectfully request your approval of our application for this much needed infrastructure, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
When any of the formulars have questions for Mr. McPerry at this time?
I might, I might be getting ahead of your second presentation on the Straddle site, but you and I met recently one-on-one, and I just, for the public record and just so everyone is aware, you mentioned that Chantel had done an, of its own propagation study, and I think you saw, or we saw part of the results of that with Woodville but no Straddle. If you have Straddle but no Woodville, what is Chantel's analysis of the gap in coverage? Could you describe that along 522 and characterize, would it be no coverage, would it be diminished coverage, and what distance of 522?
I'm going to let Jamie do that, but it might be better, I do have, I do have...
Maybe it's a Straddle question?
Maybe. I mean, if that's okay with you.
It's okay with me, I just want to make sure that we cover that.
You know, and Jamie will, Jamie's the Chantel's radio frequency engineer, so he's the expert, he's the one that put together the...
It's no problem. If we cover it one way or the other tonight, I'm fine with it.
Okay, yeah, we are prepared to talk about that.
Just skip the head if you want.
Okay, well, there it is. I think, just from a layperson's perspective, there is still a gap. It is, I think, because Straddle clearly does a better job, especially at 199, of covering a significant portion of the road. There's going to be a small area just south of 231, there may be either short gaps of no coverage or spotty intermediate intermittent throughout the coverage, vehicular coverage on the road. Getting out beyond the road, anybody that lives out that way or wants service, that becomes a lot more problematic. And again, I'm going to ask Jamie to give you the details on that with the board during the Straddle.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions for applicant? Thank you, Mr. McPerry. I think then that brings us to the public hearing. If anyone wishes to be heard, please line up at the podium and identify yourself and restring where you are from, and if you could keep your comments to about five minutes or less. I now declare the public hearing open. Thank you. Mr. Irwin.
Phil Irwin, Front Hill. I rise in opposition to this proposal that you're considering this evening. There are undoubtedly many ways that the natural scenic beauty of this county can be desecrated, and I suggest what you're considering this evening is very high on the list, number one. The planning commission has considered both of these applications that are concerned, and advised you to reject the one in Woodville. And for some reason, they did approve the one in Straddle. But either of those proposals answers the need in this county for comprehensive broadband coverage. It's only for a small amount of land, I don't know what the percentage would be, but it's a small percentage of the county that would be improved by way of broadband coverage. And until we have some type of a proposal for giving good broadband coverage in Rappahannock County for the entire county, you're considering a piecemeal, one-time proposal, which has no, it's open-ended, there's no conclusion to it. Your planning commission has produced, many years ago, a comprehensive plan, a comprehensive plan, due to the contents of the only justification that you need to turn this proposal down. Please, the desecration of this county is at stake. There are ways in the future that will not exacerbate this ugly intrusion of a series of towers. Rappahannock County is incomparably different. Let's even that, but we want the beauty and maintain our natural scenic beauty, which we have to be clear regarding today. Please do not approve this settlement.
Thank you, Mr. Irwin. Anyone else wishing to speak? Mr. Ryan.
Bob Ryan from Stonewall. I have written, after... I have written, after about the time of the planning board, written a letter with some simulations of what the Woodville site would be. And so I'd be happy to include that. I've got my remarks in there. I sent it to Michelle, so I think it's on the record, I hope it's on the record. First of all, I, you know, I think we all appreciate the response to the comments and to the people that live near the proposed sites from CSW. And in my letter, I said that I support both of the, of the sites. I live on Besseville, and certainly coming down my road, I will see the Scrabble site. But the, the mix of the needs of the community in terms of parents, children, emergency response, is clearly what we have to consider as being on top of the list. On the other hand, certainly as some of the simulations that I put, the visual impact, while reduced, is, is still there. So I think the new engineering report, which I just saw today, that I think the board commissioned, was really, really an excellent report, and I want to salute our administrator for, as being an engineer, for bringing that to the county's attention. So I think it does, that report, that engineering report, does show that with Scrabble, Sperryville, Boston, that there would be indeed a wide and continuous coverage for vehicular traffic and many outdoor. So I think it's not obvious from that report that the Woodville tower is the, and while I support it, I'm just going to read the end of my simulations, and that is to have the Woodville approved, but be built last after the existing planned towers at, well, not the existing tower at Boston, the existing tower at Sperryville, and the planned tower at Scrabble are lit up. As far as we know, you know, I've dealt in theories a lot, a lot of my life, and until we know what the actual experiments are, it may not prove to match the theory. So I offer that as a suggestion, that we wait, or at least approve on the condition that this Sperryville, Scrabble, and Boston are completed, so the actual signal strength can be measured at Woodville to determine the actual measurements, rather than theoretical calculations, to show that the Woodville site is needed and not a co-location so close to Scrabble. It's possible even to have the applicant save money. So I think that is an opportunity, and based on the new engineering report, I think might be approval with a condition. And certainly, again, meeting the needs of the emergency community and, and the, and the needs of tourists that are coming here to help our economy, and the parents and children is certainly a challenge. So I'll submit this again.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Anyone else wishing to speak? Mr. Candy.
Hi, I'm Matt for Candy, representing my family in the Beaumont District. I want to read once again from the Rappahannock County's own comprehensive plan. This is Principal Three, Policy Twelve. It says, restrict the potential impact of utility scale wind, solar, service towers, and other utility scale facilities on prime agricultural land, sensitive precinct landscapes, ridges, crests, and view sheds from scenic highways, historic sites, and other sensitive settings important to maintaining rural county atmosphere. Is this the template that the Elden Farms Corporation and community wireless structures use to select their site? It meets all the requirements. Got prime agricultural land, sensitive precinct landscapes, view shed from scenic highway, and view from historic site. My family owns Millis County, built in 1740. It is one of the oldest, if not the oldest, structure in Rappahannock County. It is the closest property to the proposed tower. The Rappahannock County Historical Society considered the structure historic enough to feature it in their 2019 calendar. Hope Curry of CWS has repeatedly contended that there are no historic properties here at the proposed power site, and repeated that claim as recently as the December Planning Commission meeting. She knew that wasn't true in March, when my family communicated with her before the first balloon test. Despite our objections, they and the Elden Farms Corporation chose to move the proposed power site even closer to our property. She certainly knew July, when she and I met, despite my numerous objections, she dismissed all of my concerns and said they were going through the application process anyway. We need to make sure that our property had a conservation event so as to avoid anything of this nature at any time in the future. Only do we know that our neighbors, who are now living in a neighborhood, were going to put up a giant salt tower on the other side of the property line. As everybody knows, Elden Farms is up for sale. The owners have chosen to leave Rappahannock County. They chose their current proposed site to maximize the sale value of their land, but in turn are reducing the value of our land. Needless to say, they chose to not put the tower anywhere near their home, but right next to ours. The Elden Farms Corporation owns full square miles of land. The salt tower at the proposed site would be an eyesore to us and to the entire community because it's in the wrong place. I don't think anyone here would want to open the front door of their house and see something that looks like this at eye level. It would certainly look nothing like a little red balloon. With all the associated hardware, it would be about the size of two cameras sitting side by side above a very tall pole. Solar signals are most powerful at similar elevations and close proximities to the transmitters as our home would be. Solar technology is still in relative infancy. Over time, the signals will get more powerful and more toxic. I do not want my family, which includes two cancer survivors, to be exposed to these increasingly toxic signals. I urge the board supervisors to follow the recommendations of the planning commission who within their almost infinite wisdom voted to deny the tower in its proposed location, with 80% of the commissioners voting against it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Anyone else wishing to speak? It's here from the Anna Lady and then Martin.
Hi, my name is a resident from the Beaumont District, and my family owns Millis County, which is the closest property to this proposed tower. It was said that this property, or the tower, was screened from neighboring property by extensive tree cover, and I can tell you that that is not accurate. I look at that patch of land every single day as I walk out of the door, and there are some trees, but they're not 135 feet tall. And I look at that area rarely, because it's the only place in my life that I've seen a redheaded woodcutter, so I'm quite familiar with it. The photos shown in this presentation earlier were shown in full summer foliage, not what that area looks like right now. The views from the road would be much more extensive, and the shots were pretty carefully selected, it seems, to block that area by foliage. This site does not have a dense foliage hill backdrop to hide it, or views from the road or from our property. This county also restricts micro rays for a reason. The teachers admit that they don't like micro rays themselves, so why put the health of people that live in this county at risk just for this limited coverage? The map of the Woodville Tower with the Scrabble Tower showed that there was potentially in-vehicle and outdoor coverage along the whole road. So why do we put, why build a little tower without seeing what the full coverage looks like for the other towers? There are very few homes along this stretch that would benefit from indoor coverage, and I personally have one of those two homes and quite outside with my black eye in mainland coverage. And I just don't think that it's worth putting the entirety of the land, decreased property values, and degradation of the scenery that makes this county so easy to err on for such a small benefit to residents and to the traveling.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there more work?
I'm Martin Woodard from Beaumont District. There's a couple quotes from the comprehensive plan I'd like to just mention. One is, we the people of Rappahannock declare it to be a scenic county, and all goals, principles, and policies will reflect and devolve from this fundamental recognition. A scenic county shall mean one in which preservation and enhancement of the natural and historic beauty, the cultural value of the countryside shall be respected as being of foremost importance. The very first goal in this comprehensive plan, and we're just quoting the Dutch calls to finish on, is to preserve the overall view shed of the county in its unspoiled natural setting, which gives it special character and identity. I believe the Woodville Tower is a wrong structure in a wrong place. It is an eyesore, right among the wealthiest landscapes anywhere in the eastern United States. I am also in complete agreement that we need better connectivity for everyone, for fire and rescue, for schoolchildren, for people working and living in Rappahannock County, not no other cell service assembly helped me in my business. So the question is not our treasure beauty versus cell towers. That is not, it's not a black and white question. The question is, how do we do it right? Not we can preserve our beautiful landscape, but still have great connectivity. To that end, I'm very pleased that the board engaged federal engineering to do a coverage analysis of the existing proposed cell towers of Almond Island quarter. I'm not an engineer, and the analysis is pretty deep stuff, but, and there are many variables, but I think it clearly demonstrates that we don't need 195-foot tall cell towers lining Route 522. It is obvious that there are other alternatives. As I understand the study, we can have good cell service for the entire 522 quarter without any tower whatsoever that would help. Now, there would be some in-house service diminished, but we have to keep in mind a stretch from where that tower is to Fletcher's Mill, there's only like six houses in that whole stretch, so the in-house connectivity really doesn't have much bearing. I urge the board to deny the Woodville Tower, but see how the coverage actually works out with Sperryville, Scrabble, and Boston. At a later date, if coverage needs, coverage needs to be improved, we can improve the cell structure with a location and an architecture that is appropriate for this beautiful landscape.
Thank you.
Thank you, Martin.
Mr. Connor?
Good evening, members of the board. This happens so rarely that I would come right up here and get right on it, and that's if I agree with every single thing that Martin Woodard just said. I'm not going to belabor any of what he said. Unfortunately, my supervisor's not here, so I don't know if he gets to vote for us in Stonewall District. But what I want to urge the board to do is very carefully go through, listen to the ordinance and the findings, and have to make sure and vote each and every one of them, so that whatever decision we make will be defensible and not subject to challenge, because the board didn't make all the findings, go through, have to vote on each and every one of them, so that we can make a record of what the ordinance requires, to make sure that all the things are crossed, and the arms are down. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Oh, Cynthia, yes, please, please, of course. Did you have your hand up?
Yes. Okay, I will address the Scrabble Tower.
This is the public hearing for the Woodville Tower.
You want me to wait?
Yes, this is the public hearing for the Woodville Tower.
Okay, for the Woodville Tower, I object to that going up. I don't think we need it. I think it's an eyesore. I think we have emissions taken up for fiber to every home, premise, and business in school in the county. That's going to cover connectivity. The last thing we need is to dispoil 522 and all of 522's scene of the tower, any size, any shape, any color. So I am opposed to the Woodville Tower. Thank you.
Thank you, Cynthia. Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, ma'am?
I'm Mary Quibb from Beaumont District, and I consider myself fortunate because I have cell phone service, excellent cell phone service. Fortunately, I don't see any towers. The tower I hang up is a good five miles away as a crow flies. So why, this, she kind of towers, that's going to be less than a mile. And I don't get any service from that tower. So I think we have to look very carefully at where this tower's going to be and who's it actually going to benefit. I don't see, I don't see a reason to put it where it is. It's going to be an eyesore, and if I can hang on with something that's five miles away and technology's older, you should know find a location for this tower that is less intrusive, less obnoxious, and still get adequate coverage for all of them to fire and rescue and all those sorts of things that were mentioned. So I seriously recommend, we'll look at the location, and as it is, I would request an eye. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I see your hand up in the back?
J.B. Carter from Jackson District, also first responder here in County. Couple things, I'm sure cell phone companies aren't looking to build towers they don't need. They're actually not going to spend money on something that's not going to help their system, so why, it would exercise of unnecessary towers is beyond me, but I don't see the logic in them actually going for something that is not needed. So if they're asking for it and they're going to spend money on it, they must need it to make their system work. Fire and EMS and Sheriff's Office all need more cell coverage in Rappahannock County. The corridor we're talking about on 522 is a dead zone for us, especially when we're trying to call the hospitals. And again, not having cell service in Rappahannock County is stopping us from jumping into the 20th century and getting computer and dispatch, so that we can have up-to-date information from dispatch sent through our vehicles by computer. And all this works on a, works on the cell phone signal. Where I used to work at, we've had CAD since the late 1980s, and it's actually helped save some of our, especially police officer lives, for getting more up-to-date information, being able to do your checks on vehicles immediately instead of having to wait for dispatch to come back with information on cars. Again, we need cell phone communications for transmitting EKGs. When you're having a heart attack and I need to transmit an EKG to a hospital, it's all done through cell phone signal. It's not done through our radio network because it won't reach the hospitals. So these are important timely decisions that need to be made, and all this information begins to relay by cell phone. If I'm in Sperryville, Woodville, or any of those areas, right now I have no service, and I have to wait till I get into Calhoun County to actually find out if I need some patient elsewhere. where CAD lab would be. If you're having a heart attack, I need to get you to a CAD lab either Winchester, Fairfax, or somewhere down in Frederichburg here, and that's usually done by helicopter. If I can't send that signal to the hospital for them to confirm that the patient's having a heart attack, then I may not be taking them to the right facility. Our deputies are in danger. Every day they go out, they are in danger, and cell phone signals, especially with CAD, can help them to interconnect with the licensing system to see what the license plates are and who's in cars, again, helping them out. And again, this thing of not in my backyard, nobody wants a cell phone tower in their backyard, but it helps the community, it helps the people at large. What if the people that lived in the surrounding, surrounding Rapid Hanny County decided, not in my backyard, I don't want, I don't want electric towers that feed Rapid Hanny County electricity? So again, is the view shed worth somebody's life? We've already had somebody die during an accident because cell phone signal was not available to them, had to drive six miles in order to get cell phone signal so they could call for help. So that's already happened in Rapid Hanny County. Again, please approve our application, this application is there asking for. We need cell phone signal, we need cell phone service in this county to help save lives. Thank you.
Good morning, Carter. Yes, sir.
Good evening. I am Archer, President and CEO of Windhoof under old name. Shout out to the people who are in there because I have time to say something. We have been working at cellular and broadband communication that goes over 15 years. We have looked at various means over that time of bringing broadband and cellular communication in as a way of hoping to preserve the property. We are fully supportive of the county's goals in terms of preservation. We are fully supportive of the comprehensive plan. Get that from Nelson Lane regularly, going back to his time on this board back 20 some years ago. But to do that, we also have to keep up with what is happening in the world. What's happening in the world is that wireless communication really is a necessity that is needed if we, and as a larger landlord or anyone else, are going to try to be able to continue to preserve land, preserve opportunities, to preserve all the vacant spaces. So we are here wanting to work with the county. We work with, we need wireless, because honestly, they're the only ones who record from us, and ask us to do so, but we go back and have been, not before the county board, but with appointed officials here in the county for years, at one point, we were able to bring fiber in ourselves from outside the county. So we are here to find a solution. We think the solution is essential for the benefit of the county, and we are here to partner with that. I know there was one mention that we're leaving the county. I think while the property is offered for sale, there's actually no sense at the moment that the Lane family is leaving the county. If someone gets to come along and offer purchase, it's a possibility. But that probably is true of every landlord here, or someone came and made a right offer. But I suspect that it would be here for a long time. Again, we want to work, find a solution. We are supportive of this application primarily because I have been working with Lane family. This is the start of my 41st year, and it's become a record haddock for 40 years. These are the first people to come to us and wanted to work with us to try to solve the problem. I don't think that next person's going to be here for this event. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
I'm Cody Dawson of Piedmont District, also run Fire and Rescue County. I also work for the Sheriff's Office. I want to repeat everything that J.B. Carter said. All of that is 100% correct and kind of speak from my experiences over the past 10 years of working for the Sheriff's Office. One of the most recent experiences, just a week and a half ago, I was on the traffic stop in Woodville. I was out at the car deal with somebody, and the next thing I know, I hear sirens coming. I looked around, I'm like, why are sirens coming? Well, dispatch had been trying to get a hold of me for 10 to 15 minutes, and they weren't able to. So now we put deputies' lives in danger just because they couldn't get a hold of me responding 100, 120 miles an hour because they think something is wrong. Where I have a departmentation cell phone, it was right in my pocket. Had I had cell phone service, they could have called me. I seen it was dispatch, they told me I was okay. I've seen a lot of motor vehicle accidents over the years where it's taken time for somebody to call me. One where sometimes the situation could have been different than now. I think that having good cell phone service is very important, especially for that area of the county that would, for the most part, it would give us cell phone coverage on main four lords in the county. So that's, thank you very much.
Thank you. So Paul, Larry, and then please, sir.
I'm Gunmar Somalhotar, District. Everything that Mr. Carter and Mr. Dawson said regarding the public safety side of this is very, very true. And between the Sperryville Fire, Sperryville Rescue, and Cassleton, we run at 522 corridor of Scrabble South. And there's a lot of accidents in the southern side of that that have occurred with tractor trailers rolling over filled with slurry that's where paving roads and creating a mess that just you usually can't deal with. We've also dealt with having an accident and not having great radio coverage and zero cell coverage. So we actually would send somebody on further south to pop up into the Culpeper County right at the line and make a cell phone call because radios didn't work. Hopefully, the new radio system will take care of that. The safety of the officers has always concerned me because we don't have a lot of deputies on duty at night. They could be in totally opposite ends of the county, and for somebody to respond, as Cody had mentioned about, they weren't able to check on him, is a serious issue. It's a serious safety issue for the rest of the public that's on the road as that other deputy's trying to get to help his fellow deputies. So from that perspective, it is worthwhile and is needed for the public safety community. I wanted to, something that has kind of chewed at me over, over the whole cell tower issues, even from the original ones that were established here in the county back in the spring days, as those towers went up and the controversy, you know, the county was basically split 50/50 on whether they wanted it or didn't want it. As you know, Amosville Tower is brown. We have a tower in Sperryville which is not brown. And as you look across every open farm area, you see the tire holes, which are brown and are very visible. In the multiple years of my experience in dealing with Navy ships, which they like to paint gray unless it's submarine and it's black, but we have found that aluminum structures, galvanized structures are better left alone. And leaving them alone means, number one, you have a long-term maintenance issue with paint. You're going to redo it at some point in time. If you leave the galvanized structure or aluminum structure alone, the corrosive action that takes place on those metals dulls the metal, makes it less reflective. If it's not smooth, it's not going to reflect. So it has a tendency to blend in better. Maybe they pop in and expose, but it's not brown when you're looking at a blue sky. So I, my recommendation after all these years, and I've been in more than 35 states in this country, and since the original cell towers here and then traveling throughout the country on business trips and in my RV, I've noticed that a lot more places have the galvanized structures or aluminum monopole structures than they do anything that's painted. It's nice to have a pine tree, but the route three does well with that. Just as a business perspective, and I think Mr. Carter expressed this very well, there's no business out there that would spend the hundreds of thousands of dollars to build a tower that they didn't need, that they couldn't justify to their board of directors. And I think if they're willing to come forward and propose that structure, I certainly do like the idea of let's do Scrabble first, and then take the measurement then to see what your coverage is. That's, that's a very good idea, and I'm glad someone mentioned that. It's a very good idea. I know that the study that was just completed does show that there's coverage in between the Scrabble and Sperryville Tower. And could we afford to wait six months to a year to determine that? And I venture to say that we probably can. I don't know how long it takes to get a tower up and running, but I'm sure it's a few months involved, at least the preparation will be in place. So from approval standpoint, you can put a stipulation on the approval at the Woodville site, only if the coverage isn't adequate enough, and then the approval will go through. But from a fire and rescue standpoint, we absolutely need it. Thank you.
Thanks, Martin.
Yes, sir. Oh, sorry, Mr. Grob.
You said, sir.
Yes, sir, I did. Thank you.
Very good. On behalf of the Sperryville Fire Department, which this area is our first duty, I can tell you there are many, many, many spots along 522 where you have absolutely no communication skill there. And we encourage you to approve this.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I'm James Bus, Piedmont District. I just want to say I think it's actually in the spirit that we support fire and rescue and cell coverage. We have a cell phone, we use all the time in Woodville, and that we get broadband, how do I recommend it? Too long. The only request we'd like to see is, you know, we have 7,000 acres. I mean, Elder Florence, can't you just push a little further up the mountain away from somebody's backyard? That's all I can do.
Thank you. Mr. Deacons?
Good evening. D. Deacons, San Antonio District. I've made opposition to those hours, both early and in print, covering the city opposition. With all due respect, fire and rescue, skyline, Shenandoah National Park is not an cell tower yet they effectively handle all emergencies there via a police radio. And if you take a look at that map that CWS has provided, I think you know, they overlay that into the toxic zone. That covers, it translates into toxicity for all those people that are underneath the trees. And as Bill Murray kind of reminds me of the old, their approach like, the Sherman Williams logo will cover the earth, and that's the example. And I'm a strong opposition and urge you to deny the application.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Helen Peterson from the Piedmont District. And I really listened very carefully to all the very constructive comments that have been made. I'm the daughter of a Pennsylvania state trooper and eventually a chief of police in the town which I grew up. So the issue of safety and emergency, those things ring very clear to me. But I think we have to be careful about juxtapositions, and I think that's what Martin Woodard was trying to say. It's not black and white. What I hear is, we'll have a corridor of communication along 522. We don't know exactly whether we need the Woodville Tower or not, but we will have a corridor. But if emergencies and safety issues are to be part of our deliberations here, what about the people who are not on the corridor? We have lots of hills and hollers out here, the part of the beauty of this place. And I'm sure there are many, many dead spots. So whose life and where? It's the same thing when we think about the beauty of our surroundings. These are, as I've said in previous meetings before this group, not just matters of not in my backyard. It's not just what's outside my window. It's a whole economy that has been built around the beauty of this place. So it's not just those who live here, but all the people who come here and stay in our B and Bs and eat in our eateries and fly in our shops and keep all these small businesses going. So I implore everyone, when we start these juxtapositions, to know, yes, we need to take safety into consideration, but we also need to take into the beauty into consideration and its long-term importance for the economy of this region. And the Woodville Tower is one that is very much one that we would need to think about in this regard, as we have thought about Sperryville and its impact. And by the way, aluminum towers do not get less unsightly over time. I would much add as well.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson.
Yes, Sally. Thank you.
Sally, Gaines, Piedmont District. I want to just remind everyone that when we're looking at photos, they're very deceiving because we're taking something this big and we're turning it into something this big. So when you can't see a tower, it's because you reduced the reality to the point where you can't see it. I can move across some interesting information today. I'm not up to date really on communications, but apparently last week Elon Musk SpaceX put up 60 more close to the earth satellites in connection with his plan to have internet for the globe. So he now has 180 of these, and according to news article, later this year, he plans to have internet service in Canada and North America. So I've heard people talk about this is not the right technology, the right technology's coming. I guess this is what they've been talking about, and it seems like there's a possibility it's going to get here sooner than I would imagine. So I do hope that we're looking at that. And the other thing I would echo is, you know, within 7,000 acres, I would be hopeful, if we have to have a tower, that it would not have to be so close to the one property that are with Melis Gavin.
Thank you, Sally. Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, sir. And then to the back.
I'm Ted Goshorn from Piedmont District. I had occasion to go to New England this last summer to visit my daughter, and one of the things I noticed was I had cell coverage everywhere we went. Everywhere I went, I had cell coverage, good cell coverage, up in New Hampshire. I asked my son-in-law where the towers were, and he said, you haven't seen one? I said, no. I said, "No." And we drove out, I went away from his house, and he said, "Look at the top of the map. Can you see it?" I said, "No, I don't." He said, "Look through the binoculars." I did, and I saw it. It looked like a tree, but it was high on a hill. Someone had laid out, had gritted out, we had finished, and had gritted out the whole area up there, and that's how they put them up. The other thing I'd like to see is with the long reach of some of the new frequencies, I'd like to see what the existing towers do before we commission a lot more and see where we really need to put them. I think there should be a timeline on when they execute and get the services going, and there's got to be some accountability somewhere along in this process. It doesn't seem like it's working right now because nothing seems to be happening. I hear stories, nothing is happening. Thank you.
Thanks, Stephen.
Hey, I am not a resident, but in business with the county. Paul, I'll speak.
Okay. My name is Ryan Pfister. I'm a resident of Washington DC, and I'm getting married here in October of this fall.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. So came to town and I pay respect for your plan for seeing the county as something that was the town. But with respect to those who pointed out this seeing the county idea, I can say that we definitely support getting some more cellphone towers in place. We're going to get married in Sperryville, but we have residents, yes, we're coming from the surrounding area and hotels, and we're a little bit concerned about, A, a convenience factor, being able to get in touch with them, and also B, an ability to get in touch with them in urgency. And I think really would like to speak in support of what the purpose on the folks of San Francisco, that's a much compelling safety element for us to bring a business to the county. We'll be picturing us in local hotels and restaurants and generally bring a business to the area, I can say. Representatives of others coming to town, we'd appreciate that. Last point I make is that it does seem like a great county, this is a place that maybe we would like to live one day, but at this point, it's not really realistic for us to live in an area where we don't have a job without cellphone service available to receive calls. Just wanted to bring a bring a business to the county perspective. Obviously, certainly, first of all, just a general information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Carter.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, Tom.
Congratulations, Chairman. See you here in the new members of the board. Happy to see you. Great to be here. Happy to have you here. You know, you're going to look out for our money and how it's spent. Now the paint goes up on the cars, correct? Always, thank you, sir.
Please address your question.
My name is Tom Pelican.
Thank you.
I live in the Hampton District. I think we're probably, hopefully, everyone in this room has been at one time or another gets up on Red Oak Mountain. Red Oak Mountain, especially this county, is probably the highest elevation in the county. It would be there all the way up to the top of it. I lived halfway up. I bought my house and I bought the property of the house in 2003. I bought the view. I did not buy the house. I now have at the house and the view, and in 2013 required me to sell the house. I sold it to a former resident of the county, whose grandfather was our doctor here, and she loved the house, but she wasn't ready to live into it. So since 2013, today, I'm still in it, and I'm happy about that. I also, in the last three, four, five months, I've learned a new word I probably should have known before. I always said, "Well, that's a beautiful view." But now I use the word "view shed." It really expresses itself, and I was hoping that maybe Mr. Wood would be able to speak here tonight on behalf of it. He owns most of it. He's my good neighbor. His father was one of the most caretakers of the county on the land that he owned. He would be very uncomfortable here tonight, I must say. As I speak, I do not oppose cell towers in my county. I don't oppose the location of the many that have been approved, but the wood for the location is not acceptable. It's in my view shed. It was in Lane's view shed. When Lane first, when they first came there, they denied, but it's on record, the chairman knows that. They came before the county planning commission, and they told us why the location where it is now. Because when they told the lanes where they want to put it, the lane says, "No, it's in our view shed." So where did they put it? They put it in somebody else's view shed, not necessarily mine. Other people who spoke in here tonight, they're upset in that Rappahannock County has done a lot to protect itself over the years. Former members of this board understood that, and they've spoken out when it's time to speak out. I know the board will do the same thing again. I want to say that the protection of our environment is very important, and the protection of our view sheds are very important in this county. It brings people here. I also respect the advice given to you tonight and members of our rescue squads and the fire departments. There is a great need. There is another place for this tower to go. There's 7,000 acres where it could go someplace, and it could be accessible if the people who put it up want to pay for the location. There's other locations on Route 522. Let's also remember that within a month or two, we're going to have a new law on those, and it's going to say you can't drive your car and hold your bone in your hand and talk. You have to have hands pre-bones. That's going to affect 522 a lot. There's going to be a lot of accidents that have happened, and they've already happened because of cell phones being used as people drive down the roads. It's more important to those who aren't using their hand bones and driving down the road, which we discovered also. I'll close by saying this. Recently in the Rappahannock newspaper, just two weeks ago, I read something that really thought was very appropriate, and it's very great. I'll read it to you. It was in 1996, 25 years ago. The paper picks up good things to tell us once in a while about our community. The first thing is about the Little Chapel, which is very historical. The other thing is about the Bridges family. Ben and Helen Bridges have put 277 acres of their land between Washington and Sperryville into Eastman, including their end of Jenkins Mountain, their pastures and ponds, their frontage on both sides of the Covington River. This is a quote, "Wouldn't it be horrible to see this subdivided, to see 20 or 30 houses," Mr. Bridges said, gesturing towards the spectacular view from Eagle's Nest near Mount Tahoe. In closing, he said, "It's heaven." That's what it is. We're only caretakers of this land. If you don't do something to protect it while you're alive, you don't know what might happen to it in the future. I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carter.
Thank you, Tom.
Anyone else wishing to speak? With that, I declare the public hearing closed. Members of the board, do you have any questions or thoughts based on the public comment or what you've heard from CWS this evening?
I would just say that it's very obvious that our view shed is extremely important to everybody in the county, and I'm hopeful that knowing that, respecting Rappahannock County and the citizens that have spoken today, that you'll go back and try to find a way to make that a better option location-wise, even if we don't need it. I think it would be good to be prepared in case we determine after Scrabble that you do.
I just wanted to say, I guess I sort of echoed Debbie's comments and the comments of a lot of people that have spoken this evening. I really do support fire and rescue, and I understand you all's needs. However, it's not an either-or situation on these towers. We also have to consider the view shed and the fitting and zoning implications. It's a both-and situation. It's not either-or. I know you have made certain offers to mitigate some of the concerns regarding the tower structures. To my mind, when I look in comparison to what we have on other structures, particularly on 211 in Rappahannock County, what we've done to really mitigate the impact on the view sheds, either putting it against wooded hillsides or disguising it in a silo, this site doesn't offer either of those options. We did receive back the engineering studies on Friday evening, late Friday evening. That leaves us relatively short runway to tonight's meeting. And with that in mind, if there's no further discussion from the other members of the board, I would make a motion that we table this until the next regularly scheduled meeting of board supervisors next Monday.
I'll second that.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any aye? Any opposed? Thank you. All right, that takes us to the second public hearing of the evening. The summers have you be so kind as to introduce the Scrabble Tower discussion.
Thank you. CWS submitted a wireless service facility application on the lattice tower of 2019. The entire area of applications submitted is provided in the agenda material specified on board box. The applicants, CWS, must have their applications prior to determination by planning permission and letter to act on board box. Although more than I was application, this application is located on deck five, 56, 4C, on Route 52, paraplu, Thomas Johnson, and Monica Henry. CWS proposes 199-foot tower, lattice tower, but they have proffered to a monopole. They are requesting waivers from microwave dishes to be used, landscaping department's department's liability, and the accessory being a stake to subdivision right. The planning commission, public hearings on December 18th of 2019, tabled until the November 23rd, in which the planning commission decided to recommend approval of this application by the property owner. This public hearing has been properly noted and considered to be voted as a newspaper unveiling's property owners within one mile of the tower. That again, I leave again as a presentation for this part.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Mr. Davis.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I'm going to be brief. I thank you first of all. The Scrabble Tower, CWS has submitted now, working on trying to address the issues. It's well screened and true, it is in the protected area. One of the good things about it, I think, is the study that you all have done is the amount of coverage that is there that comes from the Scrabble Tower. What I'd like to do is turn this over to open the hearing, as you can go through the presentation. And if you have any questions, send it out, I can answer.
Try to be more brief on this one, I won't repeat a lot of the things we've already talked about, but we'll try to just talk a little bit about the Scrabble site specifically. This site is located just south of Scrabble Road off of Jackson Lane. It's set back about just under 90 feet from 522, about 500 feet from the point on Jackson Lane. Like the Woodville Tower, we originally applied for a 199-foot lattice structure, but we have since agreed to build monopole and painted monopole, if that's what the board prefers. It's on a 26-acre parcel. It's heavily wooded, as you can see from this aerial, and that in there is the location of the tower on the parcel. The tower again will not be lit, we have a 50-by-100-foot dense compound, which is our pretty standard building. We would access the tower from, again, an existing Scrabble driveway that extends from Jackson Lane, and this area would be designed for, again, to four wireless service providers. Same objective as the Woodville site, we're trying to, along with the two existing towers in Sperryville and Boston, provide uninterrupted, strong quality coverage on that corridor. These are the same propagation maps that I included in the Woodville presentation. So one on the right shows the Chantel's projected propagation of Woodville 139 and Scrabble 199. This next one, Mary showed you a while ago, is the projected, predicted coverage if Scrabble is on the air and Woodville is not, which I think is probably your interest in, based on your earlier discussion. And I'll just kind of walk through the site in general, and then I'd like to have the Chantel engineer come up and talk about that a little bit. These are photo simulations that we prepared for Scrabble. I mean, we really do believe this is a, this is a good site. There are many, many places where you can't see it at all, and the places that you can see the tower, but the most part, it's just the top of the structure. This is, you know, so again, you should probably seen them in the application package, these are the same photo simulations. This is from up on Scrabble Road. The next one is, where is this one? It's south, I guess this is, again, coming down 522. In this case, even in winter, this is a winter shot on the tower, it's amazing sometimes how much screening you get from trees, even when they're in the, it's dense woods, they still provide a lot of screening. This is one of the more prominent views, it's from behind the church on Scrabble Road. I think that was taken from Parkamont. And the next two are from standing on Jackson Lane in front of the two closest houses, and that circle shows balloons actually behind those trees in both cases. Again, these were winter, winter shots. We mentioned before, you know, we are happy to paint the tower, you know, a couple of different options depending on what was preferred. These are the same two examples I showed before. We went through waivers, I don't think I need to go through those again, although in this case, given the fact that it's a heavily wooded site, landscaping would be particularly difficult and probably wouldn't survive because the tree canopy. So it does make a lot of sense in this case. Then the new tower again with microwave dish, we talked about that. So just cutting to the chase, you know, again, we're all about connectivity on Route 522. In this case, there is a somewhat denser population in the vicinity of the site, so this site, in addition to serving travelers on the road, we serve a good number of folks in the community. We obviously heard plenty about public safety, I don't need to talk about that anymore. We like this location, it's a densely wooded parcel, very limited visibility, and we talked about the level of current carrier interest in trying to get some additional service deployed in the county while, while the carriers are active here. One of the, one of the comments in the public comment for Woodville, you know, talked about that concern or just bringing up the issue of, you know, no coverage, you know, both of these sites are primarily covering the transportation borders. I mean, there is coverage beyond the transportation borders, but Chantel and the planning commission meetings sort of describe how they go about building out. commission meetings sort of described how they go about building out the county and, you know, step one, phase one of the major transportation borders. After they've done that, when, you know, resources allow and priorities allow, they come back and try to further to build out the counties. Can't remember what county it was, Mr. Henry on the planning commission mentioned it's Chantel.
Shenandoah.
Sorry.
It was Shenandoah.
Shenandoah, you know, pretty much throughout, but it was, the process of getting there was similar to what we're talking about in this area though. I also wanted to comment regarding to the microwave issue. When I said that Chantel, that the carriers don't like microwaves, it's not because of health issues or health concerns, it's because they don't provide the same reliability of, you know, connection as fiber does. Fiber is just a superior technology. So I just wanted to clarify that. And I guess the other, the last comment I have is just, you know, again, we are, we are in the business of building infrastructure and releasing it to carriers. There would be no reason for us to build a structure if we weren't very confident the carriers would come along and provide service. That would be a really bad business decision for us. And the same thing with carriers. It costs Chantel a couple of hundred thousand dollars to deploy a co-location, that's not even CWS's cost to build it out. There's no upside for them in building a structure that's not even, as someone pointed out, more than my personal point out. They don't get additional customers just because they put a tower in there, they get additional customers because they provide good, reliable, quality service. So that's why we rely heavily on carriers to tell us what their needs are and to figure out from there where we choose to try to put infrastructure and get a job. Would it be alright if Jamie Dennis sounds up and talks a little bit about the propagation and how he does that? Would that help?
I think that would be helpful at this time, Hope. And I did want to say, I think sometimes in negotiating or discussing the details of these applications, I don't want it to get lost, that I, and I am grateful to CWS for bringing forward applications to try to look at proposals for Rapid County. There aren't a lot of companies bringing that information to the table, and I do appreciate, you know, that we do work together through this process, and I think sometimes that gets lost in the details, and I did just want to tell you that as well.
Appreciate, thank you.
Thank you, Hope. And yes, we'd love to get more examples.
And Hope, one thing that would be helpful to me, because I had the specific question about gap in coverage, if you have Scrabble, Scrabble would know Woodville, now that we have the federal engineering study that, that we funded, that came out on Friday, I don't know if you've had a chance to look at it, but I'd be interested, number one, for you to talk about your own analysis, and then two, to talk about to what extent our independent study corroborates, undermines, or might agree with what you've already determined, that would help us a lot. Alright, thanks.
Jamie Dennis, and first for once, I heard a second. He's pretty gentlemanly.
Okay.
And Hope sent it to me last night, and I looked over it, and yeah, did match pretty much what I think I said. The only thing I have not presented and I never have, as long as I've been doing this, I've never presented or designed a network, Charlotteville, Toronto, Nelson, Orange, Lewis, wherever I'm building, I've never done it in a low band. Low bands, they're probably for a T mode, you see the map, there's 600 megahertz, they're going to go further than our 800 megahertz. The reason I don't design a network for our 800 megahertz is because that, that's where we spread most of the least of our inspection. We have a 5 megahertz channel. So going way back, when I first started doing this, I started from the bottom, I worked with customers. So I'm dealt with the customer's Charlotteville. I know the customer's going to plan about, I know their company about today, but they, I'm the end result now. The end result now is, I can't break a Facebook, I can't straighten YouTube. So what you're seeing, the position that's painted, I would disagree with anyone here. You can quit for a second. Do you have signal? I'm going to tell you, you will, on 800 megahertz, you're going to have it. But what you won't see is, on 800 megahertz, a customer with a perfect condition of their phone, one customer on this one, one antenna, they'll get about 25 megahertz down. That's perfect. You get two on it, you grab about 20 megahertz per user. You get three customers on it, you get about 17 megahertz down. So as you start to get more and more users, your speeds will diminish. You get down to four, three, two megahertz, we're getting bombarded by megahertz.
Where does fire and rescue, or the ability of some of Deputy Dodson on a cellphone, where does he fit into that? Let's set aside.
Phone call, that's what I said, 800 megahertz, these three sites, they're phone calls with that.
You're talking about data.
The data where they won't get. Right, if the tower is congested, and it's 800 megahertz only, they may have an issue. That's also up load, that's not down load, up load is even slower. So once it starts to diminish to where it comes to a problem, you stick it in and in at 800 megahertz, I can't say, okay, I was out of the channel. I'm done, 800 megahertz is not in five minutes. When I get 800 megahertz, I have a lot more pressure. You slow down, okay, I have another five. When you get to a 10 megahertz channel, you're getting about 60 megahertz down for a single user. So all of my analysis, always been 800 megahertz. I would not disagree with my studies. Alright, it looks pretty correct.
Okay, so given your plan for, your plan for, it sounds like Chantel would be a constant on all four towers, that's the one service provider we know that is for sure committed to all four, right? So let's say there's a Chantel network on those four, given your, given your plans for frequency, what is the, and take Woodville out, what, what is the gap and what is the nature of the gap in coverage on 522?
You were talking about going to Sperryville, Scrabble, Boston.
Correct, yeah.
What is the gap?
Yeah, what would the?
On 800, it's probably 1900.
Okay.
800 megahertz? It's, it's not a continuous gap, it's going to be slightly, you're going to be heading out. I think it's probably about a mile or 15, 16. It was roughly about a mile.
Based on what you're planning to do, if anybody, right, I mean, what you're?
That's 800 megahertz.
So it'd be about a mile.
You would build both 800 and 900.
Oh, yes.
Wouldn't get as swamped if you had 1900 or people that were closer.
Right, that's right.
But at 1900, the gap is about a mile on 522.
About a mile, yes. And we also own 2.5, so in the future, we do not have 2.5, but that's a higher frequency, it's a much smaller footprint. So you'd probably need another tower. If we were doing a 2.5 site, which if they do 2.5, so you'd see the same thing, this is what I would tell you. 800 megahertz, when they, I believe they did a study, they've only mentioned vehicular coverage at the low frequency, nothing about high frequency, working with a three second zone, or vehicular, outdoor, probably.
Pretty clear, alright.
Thank you, Jamie.
Anyone else? Thanks a lot.
Is that everybody that you brought, or didn't?
That, that's probably all the, I'm gonna shift, did I make one other?
Absolutely.
I'll look. Jamie, you know, I think Jamie gives a very, very good technical explanation, but just to sort of reemphasize over there, I think you all know, it was in the report too, that all the carriers have different frequencies that they own, and different amounts of spectrum. And that's really what Jamie was talking about, is the fact that while 800 could be a great solution, they only have a limited amount of spectrum. And so that's why they have to design these networks, use a combination of frequencies, and that's why the study, while you're accurate, it, it's, it doesn't address the passive issues, and it doesn't really present a realistic design in terms of how, I was looking back through some of our recent applications with carriers, because they have to report on our, their application with us to meet space, they have to detail out what frequencies they're going to use, and they all use a variety, you know, it's a combination, and it's, it's technology's impacted, it's equipment impacted, it's how much that specific spectrum they own in that particular geography, and that can vary too, so it's really.
Excuse me, heights of towers can also affect that?
Say it again?
Heights of the towers can also affect that.
Will they affect the, how far the signal goes? Yeah, for sure.
Do you all have any other questions?
I have a couple, but I don't know if it's a proper time to ask for either this one or the other tower, but you were familiar with using pine trees? We've heard it mentioned here. What's the tallest one that could be offered? Do you have that knowledge?
Well, you know, there's no real limit, I mean, you could build a 200 foot tree if you wanted to, but.
No stick out.
It would look very, really.
I understand that, but I just wondered if there's a height limitation on that?
I mean, not from a physical structure, it's really just an aesthetic limitation. The other issue with regard to pine trees is that they're monopines, is that they're very expensive, and we don't like to build them, we have built them, but it's not our favorite choice. For the Woodville site, Scrabble hearing, that it wouldn't really be appropriate there, just because there isn't, as someone mentioned, I, I was not saying that that was a heavily wooded site, I think I specifically said that it was not, but there is, there is enough vegetation and tree line between the road and the site to help screen the base of the tower, not the whole tower. But that site would not be, I don't, I think a tree would be more intrusive from a visual standpoint there than a monopole or a lattice structure. And Scrabble, you're, you do need the full height, you need 100, it's actually 195 to the top of the steel, the four foot lighting mod, that would be way too tall for a tree pole, you got to look, so you know, to the extent, you can see it.
Hope, when we, when we met recently, I asked you about, I think what you called your Warrington West site, which is on the north side of 211. You see it, I've been, as I've taken my children to school this week, I've been focused on it, or last week. Yeah, it's pretty amazing, you have to slow down about 30 miles an hour to actually see it, it's in someone's front yard. Do you know off the top of your head the height of that tree?
I think it's 120.
Okay.
I can't, I can't promise that.
Yeah, it's a, it's pretty remarkably disguised, and I recognize that it's in a yard that's heavily wooded, it's elevated, so maybe you get some height benefit from.
Well, there is this perspective issue with, with towers where, you know, the closer you are, if there are intervening trees, the less you see, sort of counter to it, which you kind of look up through the trees. And just the way that the road happens to undulate through there, you just, you just don't see it, even though it's, it's way above the road, it's, it's just an interesting site, and it is literally, what would you say, 20 feet from a beautiful house, a residential.
Well, it's further from the house, but next to the garage. It's pretty.
As I expressed to you, and I, I just want to say this for the record, as Ms. Smith already articulated, I appreciate CWS, I appreciate that you're in business, and I appreciate that we're a local governing body that's doing our best to take care of everyone's interests, and that involves compromise. As I've thought about this a lot, my, my, I don't want to call it frustration, because that's not the right word, but my concern is that because you've been in the county before, including to the Sperryville site, you know, as Phil Irwin and others have articulated, what a unique locality this is, we didn't have people here from Washington DC who are getting married, or are probably here because they recognize it's a special place. And I would hope that in future applications, and I don't, we can't get into your business decisions, as you well pointed out to me, within the limitations of state code, it's not my intent to do so, but only to send the message that, given this unique community we live in, I would hope that CWS's starting point on future applications will take into full account the fact that many people in this community, while wanting cellular coverage in some form, also do want to respect the value and the importance of our landscape in these view sheds. And I feel like a starting point that is a lattice tower, then that is proffered to a monopole, leaves us with a big gap in between those who want to preserve view sheds and, and where you're coming from. And I just wanted to state that, so that if we're sitting here again in the future, maybe we start closer to one another than so far apart as we are in this case.
We clearly want to take the path of least resistance, I mean, we do.
I understand.
And, and so I appreciate what you're saying, and I'm just saying what you're saying.
Any of the other supervisors? Mr. Fraser? Is that alright?
There we go.
Thank you, Ms. McQuarrie. And with that, I declare the public hearing on Scrabble Tower open. Mr. Irwin.
Phil Irwin, fun deal. Rather than to recite what I have already commented upon earlier, let me introduce a bit of history. I don't know how many years ago it was, over 20 perhaps, an application was made by Chantel or such, or one of those three predecessors, for a series of towers connecting Amosville and Washington. And the result, after the Rapid League for Environmental Protection suggested that alternatives to towers hidden somehow, obscured, made invisible between Amosville and Washington, would be an alternative. Right now, I don't know how many towers there are in that circuit, but it is providing signals along Route 211, along that stretch. Those towers, I don't know how many there are, because I can't count them, I, you can't see them. They're booked, they're obscured, they're hidden, and I would think that that being a precedent, you could follow and expect it to be applied for as an alternative, which I don't have, not heard any alternatives from the applicants. And until I do, I'm unsatisfied with the fact that we shouldn't be doing this, and I do encourage you to request how these towers could be obscured so that they did not deface this view.
Thank you, Mr. Irwin. Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, Mr. Summers.
Hi, I'm Chris Beattie, I'm also the chief of Sperryville Rescue and member of the county's Supervising Broadband Committee. This is a keen interest outside, I wasn't here for the earlier discussion, because I've been called, just wanted to say for the record that we strongly support both towers, that access for us is really important. So if one of the linear spaces where we needed cell coverage for people that injured, and they were able to reach out, you've heard before, I hope you stand your ground and just want to continue.
Thank you.
Todd, you told us at the last, I think it was the last broadband committee meeting about a specific incident where you had to pull into the apron of the Sperryville Rescue.
Correct.
Could you just, for everyone's benefit, just retell that story?
Yeah, so we were called a woman having chest pains, hooked her up to our EKG machine, and told us she was having a major heart attack. We were in transport, and normally what we like to do is to transmit a picture of the EKG script to the hospital that's going to receive her, so they know what exactly is going on. No cell coverage, so we had to stop at the station with the. No cell coverage, so we had to stop at the station with the patient in the back, get a connection to our phone, use our Wi-Fi signal to send the picture to Winchester Hospital. That's four or five minutes of delay of the patient in the back who's having a heart attack. So it's one of many examples of cases. My first cases in MT was, the call was at four in the morning for a two-car accident and a pedestrian hit by a vehicle. Person had been on empty Valley Road, car had broken down, no cell coverage, nothing. Another car came along, hit him in the back, which hit him and put him into a midship. And that's a perfect example of where cell phone coverage would have allowed him to call and ask for help. He'd been up for hours waiting for someone to stop and help him. We had a woman in Woodville right across from the old Fort July sign, whose husband had a heart attack working on a tree stand. And she tried to call for help. Ended up having to walk up to the site, climb over the gate, fly down a car in Sperryville Pike, get a ride in Sperryville, call 911. So by the time we got there, her husband of 36 years, which based out of the creek, dead. Cell phone coverage included the Woodville Tower, could have mitigated that. Larry Grove and I had to sit with her, explain to her why on her phone it said failed call, failed call, failed call, failed call, try to dial 911. So love the view shed, you come next time, explain to them why you have a tower there.
Thank you, Todd. Anyone else wishing to speak? That's Ms. McQuarrie.
Okay, we are right across from the proposed Scrabble Tower. The Scrabble Tower is within feet of certain homes, and some of them are only common circumstances. And within a quarter mile of 26 homes. That's too close to homes. In our comprehensive plan, we say do minimal damage, protect our farmlands, protect our residences, protect our beautiful land. That is not minimal damage, that is maximum. That is the danger sign. And to say that it's not a view shed issue, it is. It would be a view shed issue for our farm, which my parents purchased for the view shed. Coming down 522 is ball seat, and when you hit Scrabble Corner, you can see it there. It would be really close to the highway. You will see it on down the road. It may not be as pronounced as the Elden Farms, but it is a view shed issue. If you're going to reject one, you need to reject the other. You shouldn't throw one group of people under the bus who are living close to this proposed tower. We get a Sprint signal on our farm. We have gotten it for 15 years. Chris Perez called me from it in our yard, and I got the call in my house. I don't want to bring John in, but John is my next door neighbor, and he has a cell phone that works in his cabin. He goes out the rep and the news, there is no tower around. So there is a signal as close as across the street from this proposed tower. He may not be everywhere, but we're in a hill down this town. Hope said she addressed all the concerns of people who talked to her. She did not. I have talked to her on the phone, I have emailed her, I've talked to her in Sperryville, she did not. Let's get that straight. In fact, she told me there would be no tower near my home. So many moving off of landlines to cell phones. If they are, it's because of the propaganda we receive all the time about how harmless cell phones are and how necessary they are. I do support fire and rescue, support our law enforcement. But to say we need public safety at the expense of poisoning the public and poisoning the county, and even the media is coming to wait up to this. With the 5G, where they want to put antennas on every record line and radiate this close range, they're coming to realize that this radiation is very, very harmful. The radiation has been linked to polypalblastula, brain cancer, that came in with cell phone service. It's linked to thyroid cancer. It's linked to autoimmune diseases like Parkinson's, or at least making them worse. It's linked to early dementia, inability to concentrate, ADD, inability to do anything but injure us, you know. If you test our schoolchildren, it's schoolchildren when they didn't have this technology, the previous generation was sharper, brighter, faster. As far as fire and rescue, the park uses police radios. They don't allow cell towers in right now. There's pressure on the national boards to implement, but so far this park has not. I think we could do with police radios and one or two good towers that cover the whole park with police radios, and sign up police radios to bus drivers, to anybody who thinks they may have an accident and they're responsible and they need something to hold. Because the thing with police radios, from what I've read, is that they carry further, they're more robust, and amount in this inhaling area, they do better. They do better like in the park, they would do better here. Cellular service, and I'm giving you guys this link, is unreliable. It goes down easily, it goes down in bad weather. You can go around a curb and lose it, you know, you can go down a road and lose it. It's too unreliable for dependence of law enforcement and fire and rescue wanted. I think, I give you a link about all fiber communities that have no wireless in them. A lot of them are in the wilderness of Canada. They do need emergency services. There's a phone number and an address in there in one of the links that you can contact them. Why don't we talk to them about how they handle their emergency services? In Los Angeles, and I give you these links, the firefighters were having such a problem with their fires, they were getting headaches, they were losing their memory, they couldn't concentrate, and they insisted that the cell phone towers be removed from fire stations in the Los Angeles area. And they said they could not go out and fight their fires, you know, that it was affecting them neurologically. Just do a search. Los Angeles firefighters, get rid of cell phone towers, just do a search. So a lot of it is not, you know, opposed to fire and rescue, we're giving them the best, you know, they need to be healthy, just like the public needs to be healthy. We don't need this radiation. We have a mission statement in the comprehensive plan, and within every four of these applications for fiber to every home, premise, every home, every business, and every school. There's a reason for that. Why do they want fiber backups? Why does she say, well, we can't go out miles on Elden Farms, because we can't get fiber out there, so we're going to take the fiber that our seed brings, wrap and collect it down 522. That's the fiber we should use. They want fiber, because they never have to upgrade it, it's that superior. It is fast, it is safe, it is reliable, it is that superior that they want it for the wireless broadcast. Why not take that superior stuff and give it to us in our homes? Give it to our businesses, give it to fire and rescue. Give us fiber phones, fiber TV, fiber internet. Broadband Committee decided broadband should be brought in, not by wireless towers, but by fiber network. It's, it's far superior in the schools, it's far superior in the library, the only fault I can understand, they hooked it up to wireless routers. I can feel the wireless, it's a lot of torn, I'm sensitive to it, stuff. Give me pressure on it. You can harm our fiber, it's superior to anything. Why don't we give it rather than give it to these, this technology that is going to poison us? Basically, it's inferior technology. I would say let the Boston Tower and the Sperryville Tower be up and fully running, and then test the signal. Test the signal down 522. I was at both hearings, they put out a propagation out of the big blue circle of five miles around both towers. They met in Woodville, that we give an emergency signal all the way down the road without either tower. So I say it's foolish to authorize either tower when neither of these are up to running yet. And also, radiation goes in one direction, it only gets stronger, it doesn't get weaker. As it gets stronger and stronger, you can be sure of a signal. The signal we have is coming from somewhere. It's coming from Amesville or somewhere, and we're getting it. I don't know where Jones is coming from, maybe you might run.
You know, I hate to interrupt anyone, but I would ask you to wrap it up.
Okay. Well, what I want to say is, I think Sperryville Tower should be, I mean, the Scrabble Tower should be denied, for the same reasons as the Woodville, and most especially, it's too close to homes. And we already have a mission statement for fiber, and we can't have both. In a small county, we cannot afford to invest in fiber to the home and these damn towers put into them. So I say deny the towers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McQuarrie. Yes, Mr. Kudryk.
Hi, I'm Melanie Kudrykansky, I'm from the Stoneroll Hawthorne District, and tonight I've been asked to speak by board, Mr. John Jackson, who lives on Jackson Lane. He, literally, the South Tower versus Scrabble is in his backyard. The picture showed was the corner of his house, as you look off of Jackson Lane. So some of the things, the questions that he proposes is, who will maintain the road right now, residents there on Jackson Lane? It is a private road, they do have to maintain it themselves at their own expense. How often will the road be used? Whose property will you cross to put up the tower? Will you be moving trees to put up the tower? When we have storms, will it cause problems? How will you fix the road when the work is complete? Will there be a road to the tower? Where will, that would be off of Jackson Lane, which is a private road? And will this tower help our fire department, our police department? I think Mr. Jackson would say that it's not opposed to the towers. If we need this in the community, he supports it. I'm not sure if the proposal that's been made covers the residents there and the portion of that road that's going to be used. I don't think I saw it, whether that's covered.
Can I ask you to repeat? I missed writing down one of your questions. Before, after road repairs, but before, if it would help fire and rescue, I missed that question, please.
And perhaps you could put them in writing to the board service very clearly.
I can.
Not to preempt you from responding.
Yeah, at the, at the risk of sounding like another board member, could you repeat that last question? Between road repairs and if the tower would help fire and rescue, please?
Yes, if it will help our fire, fire department and.
Please, but what's before that? Storms, oh.
Oh, with storms, sorry. When you have storms, will it cause problems? Very good.
Maybe like a lightning run type thing?
Winds creep down, quadrants falling off the tower maybe. Very good.
Thank you. What we'll, what we'll do is circle back and, and work on some of these, either tonight or, or in the very near future.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, Bob.
Bob Ryan, yeah, Jackson. I live closer to Scrabble, actually, than Woodville. But I won't say it, until I get down by the building, I'll be 500 feet above it. But again, to my previous remarks, I think it's something that is needed, obviously, and probably the Scrabble, I would again say, let's light up Scrabble, let's light up Sperryville, let's light up Boston, and see where we are. I mean, that's, we've got two, two out of three that are ready to be switched on, right? Are we waiting, waiting, waiting to have those switched on, so we can see what the services? Perspective also, I think, is helpful. I had, this is a bit over 10 years old. We forget, the iPhone is now maybe 15 years old, and Elon Musk is putting up, somebody mentioned hundreds of satellites. There's an article in this month's, I think, Sky Intelliscope, yeah, because I watch stars, that's worried, are we going to have so many communication satellites at low Earth orbit that we can't see the stars anymore? Obviously, it's looking like so, in and out, so, so, you know, everything is compromised, I guess, as we go forward. And I fully support the Scrabble Tower. I think it will serve Woodville better than the Woodville Tower. And I, I do, again, agree with CSW, communicating well, probably better starting points would have been helpful. And to go back to my simulation, one of the things that I included in there was the simulation from Red Oak Mountain, which I think was not done. And the simulations were summertime, so if the tower is in my front yard in wintertime, well, I'm going to, I'm going to notice a little bit more. So again, I, I support that. And the fiber is something that we, as a county, with our cooperative, the Rock Paper and Collectors is our, our company, I mean socialist, even Brown would support, I think, it being our cooperative, which it is. We should get on to get the fiber that we need, that the whole, that our whole service needs. Other cooperatives are working with not local dollars, they're working with the FCC-provided dollars to expand into fiber. So that's, that could be the future too, and needed. And again, going parallel with what we need in immediate time, as far as meeting the parents, the emergency community, their needs are foremost, but 10, 15, 25 years when this can be expanded, I think we have to think about that too, and get on our cooperative to do a lot more. So that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Irwin. Anyone else wishing to speak? And with that, I'll declare the public hearing to be closed. Members of the board, did you have any points of discussion or questions based on what we heard during the public hearing?
I have a, I have a question, and I wanted to talk to my colleague, Mr. Fraser, actually, if that's appropriate. You haven't testified publicly, you're sitting next to me. You were, I think, well, clearly you're the only board member who was here during the rollout of the Sprint Towers.
Yes.
And I just wonder if you could walk us through how we reached a point in the deployment of the, or how Sprint reached a point in the deployment of those sites that resulted in a combination of silos and trees, and how that all came to pass?
I, I didn't mean to, I don't mean to cut you off, I'm so sorry. I was thinking this would be a good time for a recess. Would anybody else, I think that if, before we get into this, I did mean to, to take that break. Would you mind if we did that now, Mr. Fraser? Just take a brief five or 10 minute recess?
Does that mean I can leave?
Did I leave him on the spot?
Let's take a quick five, 10 minute recess and then repeat. Thank you. Thank you. Do I have any...
There was no water.
I just wanted to come down and tell you, I mean, you know, we may have lost it now, if you're not able to...
Thank you for saying that.
Perfect place for a little...
Thank you so much.
I'm a big...
They didn't exchange.
I had a whole bunch of bad stuff that I signed on. Oh, poor guy. Chipped it out.
You feel everything goes on.
Don't be, don't be...
Construction, culture together. That's what Bobby's team, the operations, they went away quick.
Good seeing you.
On the move, it takes a leak and take a, but they promise.
I'm going to catch you in the kitchen, soon as I watch.
Nice service.
How you doing, Mike?
I'm doing good. How are you doing?
Oh, I saw that, but I think it was...
I'm just going to ask you if you can, not hate, if you have. It's a good one, long shot. I had someone.
Do I need to pay for it?
All right, if everybody's ready, I'd like to bring the meeting back to the board, please. We left off with a question and a discussion about, you know, what is historically been the process of accounting for tower reviews and approval, Mr. Fraser?
Yeah, just to clarify, my, I mean, my question is really just for context, because we've seen all the silos and the trees and everything else. And I recognize it's a different time and place, but I think for the benefit of me at least, probably Mr. Donahue's newcomers, it'd be good to get that history and hear the one who knows it, so.
Well, it really was an application. They, when Sprint first applied in Rockdale County, I believe five lattice towers on hilltops, and they would have been seen, I don't know if they proposed any lights on them, but at 199 on a hilltop, it would have been, you know, much more coverage than what we wound up with. But it would have been, it would have been seen. So there was a big uproar in the community about five lattice towers on hills. They withdrew the application, they came back with seven. And two of those are monopoles, the Amos Hill and Beavie New, which were shorter than they are now. They sent that special permits to extend those. But you had the pine tree, it's, what do you call it, a monopine along 522. Most people don't know it's there. It's near Miss Gressinger's house. And then we have three silos. And there's one there on Jordan's Hill that most people don't know about, but it's in the trees and most people can't see it on 211. So that was their application, and we, the board pretty much approved what they applied for. But it was three silos, one in Huntley, two in the Washington area, the monopine along 522, and three monopoles, excuse me, one of which most everybody doesn't know about, along 211. So that was the application, and the public was generally okay with it. And I think it's worked out pretty well.
Thanks for the background.
Any other discussion? Hope, based on what you heard in the public hearing, did you have any follow-up comments? Or did you want to work through your questions that were presented for Mr. Jackson?
If you'd like me to.
That would be wonderful. Thank you.
I just spoke with him individually, but I'll go over them again.
Thank you.
I'm not sure I remember any questions either. I know he had some concerns about the crew maintenance. It's private road, major Scrabble road, Jackson means Scrabble road. And I let him know that, you know, it's our standard practice to, there will be some large trucks, crane, et cetera, during construction. And to the extent that there's any damage from those trucks going in and out Jackson Hady during the construction of the site, we always put it back to where it was. I told Mr. Jackson that he could go look at the Boston site. This is the exact same situation where there's a gravel road, private gravel road that leads up to the site. And we did work pretty closely with the neighbors during construction to make sure that everything was taken care of and the damage that took place. Once the site is in the air, there's very minimal traffic to it. Carriers individually, you know, to the extent that you have one or more carriers there, they'll typically go once a month, once every two months, in a small panel truck or a pickup truck, and, you know, do some maintenance at sites and tweeting of their radio equipment. But that shouldn't cause any issues with the road. What else?
The clearing area, that will be affected in order to construct the tower, has that been some of the...
Yeah, it'll basically be, if you, if you was confident, you're drawing, you're basically can specify on our drawings of our application, it'll be whatever trees. You have to extend the gravel roads, the trees that come down that 10 foot or 12 foot wide stretch of road, and then the area 50 by 100 foot fence compound. We'll, we always make, you know, a good effort to keep as many trees up as possible. And there is a, you know, a pretty good setback between the property line and the fence. So there will be that tree buffer for Mr. Jackson.
And then in terms of the storm situation, I mean, I think the height requirements and the clearance around it.
Yeah, I mean, if the, if the concern was, you know, would it fall down? That, you know, we build these things, we can't believe how deep and strong the foundation is. And they are designed with what's called breakaway technology so that if anything ever were to happen, which is extremely rare, the tower is designed and monopole is designed to kind of break off in sections, and it has to be, it's at a fall radius within the fence compound. And then, of course, there's the setback requirement too, which, you know, provides an added measure of safety.
Then I was wondering, while we have you at the microphone, if, I know Mr. Goschorn brought it up, and I believe some other folks did too. And I know we discussed it extensively at the planning commission level, as I was the board's representative to that body last year, about the timelines for the delivery of service to the existing sites. I know that's an ongoing concern, and I understand Boston is eminent.
Yeah, and you believe me, we get as frustrated as you do in terms of the delays sometimes and a variety of reasons. I know Boston, for example, T-Mobile is a carrier that's working right now and getting on the air in Boston site. And a big chunk of their original delay was equipment. They couldn't, like, the equipment that they needed, the funds, you know, was on backorder, for lack of a better description. And it took a long time just for them to get the equipment. All of their, all of T-Mobile's equipment at Boston is on the tower and ready to go. The only thing that they haven't finished is the microwave backhaul connection. It's really far for them from, or T-Mobile from that site to the next site that they're going to use to try to get a telco there until fiber is available. And so they're still working on that. We've been told they're on the air by the year, they're not on the air yet. But I know, we get, we ask for reports from T-Mobile's construction votes, usually weekly. You know, Shentel, well, T-Mobile also has a lease at Sperryville. I know they have good building ground, but right now they haven't started building out the site, and I don't know exactly why. Typically, I know the characters of everybody else, they have lots of sites, they have lots of fires that they're fighting, and the priorities are constantly shifting. And I think I mentioned this to you maybe one time, and maybe in the planning commission meeting, there's a real shortage of tower industry workers right now, people that can climb towers and do work. And that's creating a lot of backlogs. It's actually, you can, you know, look online, FCC is working on this constantly. There's all kinds of federal initiatives to train a workforce because of 5G deployment and how important, what priority 5G is in the, you know, by the country. There just aren't enough people. And so, you know, sometimes, I think I was asking T-Mobile about Sperryville, and they said, we need to finish Boston first, and then we'll move that crew, you know, over to Sperryville. And Shentel, you know, we were told recently that all four of these sites are now, they just updated their budgets, they're now in their 2020 build plan. So we can get these things underway, hopefully Shentel will build out this year. And then Rising was a surprise, just in terms of timing. A couple of months ago, I think, they approached us, you know, wanted to know what height was available on the tower. A couple of months ago, I think, they approached us, you know, wanting to know if hype was available on the tower, we told them, you know, get in line, to other carriers, Sperryville, sorry. And they have proceeded and now have actually filed an application with us, they've done all their engineering drawings, and they told us their goal is to not air this spring, so we'll see. But we're very happy about that.
And Mr. Curry has a quick question as well.
Regarding the site line, but it shows the lease area appears to be the same as your fence line for the compound.
But the, go ahead, sorry.
Okay, so if that is the case, how would you meet the screening requirement if you don't get a waiver? And if you do get a waiver because there are trees around the tower, how would you protect the trees that are around the tower if it's outside your lease area?
So the way our ground lease is written, it basically says, you know, we have a fifty by one hundred foot lease area along with any required landscape buffer. So we have that agreement with the ground owner, that if we're, you know, required to keep all the trees within, you know, ten feet or fifteen feet or whatever the requirement is, that, that, you know, that's part of our lease. I think our lease was submitted with our application.
I don't believe it.
No?
So.
Which is leading to.
If, so if the board is of a mind to approve a waiver on the landscape, there is still no, there is a possibility that the trees all around the tower would be lost? And how would you protect against something like that happen?
We would have to have, I guess, a tree safe area with the ground owner.
Perhaps that's something you'll discuss before now and when the board makes a decision.
I don't anticipate a problem, because I think the ground owner is intending to build a house on that same property, and I think wants to keep as much of the tree cover in place as possible. So our interests are mutually aligned. I just wanted to mention, if I could, just one really quick thing about the, in follow-up to your discussion about the Sprint deployment, you know, those are, I think, less than a hundred feet tall, the silos. I don't know a lot about the monopine structure that's there, but I know the three silos are all less than a hundred feet. And one of the problems with that in today's environment is that the configuration of antennas that the carriers prefer, and that will need for 5G and all the current technology, don't fit very well inside a silo. And it also makes colocations very difficult. I'm not sure if there are any additional carriers in those Sprint silos, or whether a second or third carrier could make those hundred foot silos work. I also look today, just out of curiosity, and those structures, all of those Sprint structures that have been around for a while are about two to two and a half miles apart from each other. And the configuration that we proposed on 522, it's just under ten miles total, and I think the Scrabble to, Boston Scrabble is just under three miles, and then it goes a little bit through, you know, so our spacing is actually, you know, broader than what's on, in terms of the number of structures, and, and, you know, so again, just keeping in mind the advantage to county with height, colocation, and being able to have one structure that can service every carrier that wants to be there, as opposed to, you know, something a lot shorter, and then the second carrier's going to have to come back and ask you to build something else.
For the board's benefit, one of the silos has two carriers, I suspect that's probably the next one.
I think there's two in the one.
Two in the Washington.
Right, other than that, I think it's just one piece.
Hope, just out of curiosity, when fiber does come in, does the microwave dish actually get taken down, or does it get left off? Gets taken down?
And I just had a question, when we talked last week, we talked briefly about the fact that you had interest from Verizon on Sperryville, you've got T-Mobile in Boston, and then.
And Sperryville.
And Sperryville, okay.
These is, yeah.
So would, would T, just from my own understanding of this concept of a four-cell tower continuous coverage network, and maybe I'm missing a point, but have either T-Mobile or Verizon expressed any interest in the Woodville and Scrabble sites to complete such a network?
T-Mobile has, not in form of an application or a lease, but we've provided them information and they've confirmed for us that that could work for their network. Verizon hasn't gone any further than this very conversation with us.
And based on your experience in your industry, does, what feels like to me is kind of a scattershot receipt of inquiries from these different providers, is this typical, and also is the timeline, and what seems like a long delay in getting Sperryville and Boston, I mean, is this also typical based on your experience?
I think it's been, uncertainty is typical. Boston has been a long, a lot longer than we were used to for a variety of reasons. So there was, I think, a six-month equipment delay, there is this workforce shortage, this microwave issue, their efforts to try to get that to work, that, that is not typical. And then, you know, they're paying us rent, so.
Yeah.
Just again, to talk about the sort of business side of this, this whole equation, they, they, you know, clearly they want to be on the air, and I'm sure they're being pressured to get on the air.
Yeah, good points. Thank you.
Hope, Mr. Curry has one more question, please, don't be so sorry.
It's probably one you can't answer, but. Obviously, air towers are something that citizens have a hard time looking at, we've heard about that, and we know what's been happening over years and months relative to T-Mobile and Sprint. And could that delay installation of any of these towers, by either carrier, but one of the carriers?
Well, I'll let Jesse comment also, but I, the great news for my industry, this industry, infrastructure industry, is that we are almost at the end of that discussion. The judge, the trial is over, the parties involved in the lawsuit have their, they did their closing arguments, I did two weeks ago, and, you know, the consensus seems to be that a decision will be made on the merger by the end of February. And the other, and again, I don't know this for a fact, I don't know if anybody knows this for a fact, but the other thing that I'm hearing very consistently is once that decision's made, whatever the outcome, it's going to be full steam ahead for, you know, for those companies to get going again, because they have had their hands a little tied while the mergers, discussions are going on. Jesse, do you have anything to add? No?
Waiting.
Thank you.
I ask Jesse all the time.
Any further discussion? The motions relative to this application that we'd like to enter during this evening?
Table the first one.
Yep, so I'll make a motion that we table this, was a motion on the Woodville application to table until February 3rd.
Correct.
So I'll make, make the same motion with respect to the Scrabble application, to table until the February 3rd, regular board of supervisors meeting.
I'll second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And that brings us to the end of our agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So.
You're the second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.